Ladies and gentlemen, it's 7:00 PM. It is 7:00 PM November 5th of 2019. Before the City of Portland Council meeting, we have a public hearing. The public hearing this evening is regarding the City of Portland's 2020 proposed budget, proposed general fund budget. Public hearing is now officially open. We have one individual who has signed up beforehand, Steve Muka. Steve, very present. There you are. Can you please use the microphone at the podium?
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to talk to you about budget as it relates to the agreement the city has in the past had with Drug Enforcement Agency up in Syracuse. You know, our city police chief and detective spoke favorably about it. A father had come in a few meetings ago and talked about how his son had overdosed and the concept that it's not about the high, that the kids are in pain once they're hooked. It's about, you know, your next fix so you're no longer in pain. I hadn't really realized that. So it's not fun and games, it's just trying to survive. You know, it was mentioned that driving a city police car up to Syracuse, there was some cost, maintenance, tires, wear and tear. But on the other hand, that the DEA compensated Portland toward the officer's time and the officer, detective, always could stay in Portland if he was needed. So Portland was never without somebody if there was a need, you know, plus you have all the other officers. So the 2020 budget, let's see if we can find some funding if, in fact, money is the reason that the city no longer wants to work with the DEA, which I think is really bad. I mean, I think we need all the help we can get. If there's four or five agencies, let's work with them all. We've got, you know, lots of kids dying. So aldermen, my understanding is you get $6,000 a year. If you put in 10 hours...
Five.
Okay, 5,000, thank you. If you put in 10 hours preparation for each meeting, that works out with the number of meetings a year to about 250 hours a year of your time. So at 5,000, that would be $20 an hour you'd be making. But there's two aldermen that would be making close to $120 an hour. And that's because of the health insurance, which, and please correct me, I heard was around $25,000 a year, the cost of the medical insurance. Am I wrong? That's what I had heard. And so the idea would be if those two older people didn't get the medical insurance, that's an extra $50,000 a year. Okay? Well, okay. So there's a extra money around. And if you took a couple thousand of that extra money and paid for the tires on the patrol car, whatever, so that you no longer have an objection to working with the DEA that could easily help keep drugs off our streets, you know, even if it meant helping the one person, I guess, that's left, there's the New York State Health Insurance. And if you have, you know, lower income, $20,000, $30,000, the premium is not very much. I know somebody that has been doing this. So if needed, you know, we help that one alderman, if that's what's going on now, with their premium. But no longer would you have the $25,000, you'd be, you know, a couple thousand dollars a year to help somebody be on a New York State insurance plan. And then, in addition, you could maybe lower the tax rate a little bit. So both kids, the entire community, and officers are all endangered, every, all of them, by having drug dealers and drugs in the community. We should work with the DEA. And it appears there's not really much of a reason. I mean, if it's financial, we can figure that part out. If there's some other reason, we haven't heard it, I haven't heard it, I'm pretty interested in this issue. But, you know, if we can catch the dealers up in Syracuse and the drugs don't get down here, great, you know, why not? You know, if, you know, a kid dies down here and we're not working with the DEA and it's determined that there were drug dealers up in Syracuse involved in the transaction, it'd get interesting liability-wise, you know? You know, the parent would go, hey, yeah, the parent would go, you know, wait a second, you stepped out of a program that was good and was catching the bad guys and my son is dead now. And it just gets interesting. So it's a life and death thing. And the same thing with the officers, they're having to go deal with more drug dealers and more people on drugs. So they're in danger also. So, you know, at some point, if an officer is harmed and you weren't working with the DEA, and it could have been that, maybe it wouldn't have been so dangerous around here. So I'm just hoping we get back on that one and, you know, if the health insurance somehow can be worked out and that that money could be used to work with Syracuse and the DEA, let's do it. Thank you, Steve.
Anybody else here present to speak regarding the 2020 proposed budget, City General Fund Budget? Hearing seeing none, we'll call the public hearing closed. And now we'll call the meeting officially to order. If all rise, if you're able, to play your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments? If nobody's signed up for public comments, is there anybody who'd like to speak this evening? Seeing none. We have opportunity for ward reports. First ward.
The leaves are finally falling off some of the trees, so you've seen a lot of yard waste around the board. I would like to take the opportunity to remind everybody to make sure that you're not clearing yard waste out into the road for collection. DPW is coming around and collecting, but we need to make sure that the roads are still clear and that we aren't putting yard waste out into the road for the collection. So, and we're just really grateful that DPW's doing all that good work, so, thanks.
Second ward.
Second ward also has a lot of eed debris. If you have not gotten it off your lungs, the snow is coming, now's the time to do it. DPW does go around, but they don't necessarily check every street in the city every day. So if you have been waiting to have your leaves picked up, I recommend that you give them a call and courteously, courteously ask them to please come and scoop up your leaves. I'm working on setting up a ward meeting that anybody would be welcome to. I understand that there are people who would like to discuss the difference between zoning and codes and also talk to our assessor, Mr. Fitz, and all of those entities are willing to meet. I'm just working on my location. So I will put that on Nextdoor Portland. If you're not a member of Nextdoor Portland and you'd like to be, contact me. I can also make, reach out to Portland Voice and to the Time Standard to make sure that information gets in there as soon as that meeting is set up. And the last concern in the second ward, besides the, besides noise issues that just don't seem to go away, is lights, streetlights. We have a lot of streetlights that are out on the city and it's a real problem. And I think we need to talk about a new solution for how to handle it because counting on citizens to record them on the website is not, not the most expedient way to get our lights fixed. And right now, it's pretty dark out there, so maybe we can talk about that. And that's it for the second ward.
Third ward.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Fourth ward.
Mostly quiet in the fourth to piggyback on what Kat and Katie said. Again, the other reason not to break your leaves into the road is, doesn't take a lot of leaves to clog up the stormwater sewer drains. And once that happens, then you're talking about four or five inches of water pooling and causing little flooding or, you know, more splashing of cars driving by, whatever. So again, to, in the next week, DPW will be starting leaf collection, just get them to the...
That's it. Fifth ward.
All quiet in the fifth ward.
Seven.
Same as seven.
Eight.
Just gonna piggyback on Katie and John, leaves breaking into the street were a problem. Last Thursday night's storm, a lot of streets were very flooded. I myself was out trying to clean the drains around our street, just to try to get some of the water down because it was, it was really falling pretty bad. And Katie's concerned on the light faults. This was also a concern, I received some calls just before Halloween, and this is, this is what I've been told, that our new lamp program is supposed to be commencing within the next week or two. These LED lights won't require as much maintenance as these halogen lamps, sort of halogen. So the concern regarding lights going out will probably be much, much smaller than normally when these go. So if you do experience them, it might be some kind of installation issue. But these should run maintenance-free for a long time.
Like years?
Yes.
All abandoned hours.
Do you know how long it'll take to replace all the lights in the city, as they said?
No, right now, they're trying to determine what part of the city do you want to start in first.
I hope they start with Main because there are five out from Groton, down on Main Street, down, won't that be North Main?
I'm sure that they're gonna map out some program and they'll, they'll let us know once it's mapped out.
Yeah.
But I was told within the next week or two...
Thanks.
...that they're gonna start installing these.
I'll pass that along.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor's report. If you did not attend, the Halloween parade was very well-received and the attendees enjoyed themselves and I think some of the parents did as well. We've been continuing discussions about workers' compensation for next year and the discussions with the county and the other, and the towns and the villages have been productive. We're gonna continue to see what happens as we move forward. And we are in the first phase, there's letters that were going out from the city, I believe, today in terms of the whole reavow, reassessment for the city. So people will be getting letters in the mailbox and we're asking for people to fill it out as accurately as possible. And the key here is just having accurate information as we are looking to make sure the assessments for properties are correct. And the immediate concern typically is how much am I gonna go up? And the truth is, some go up, some actually come down, and some stay the same. So there's no real prediction until they have a good look at the big picture as to what will happen with some properties. But we need the best information that we can, so asking people to fill them out accurately is all that we ask. Otherwise, what we have on file, I believe, is what stays on file. Today, election day. If you did not have the opportunity to vote, hopefully you have the opportunity before this meeting is over, for those of us here in the room or watching on the live feed. And one more holiday, next Monday, encourage everybody to take some time and recognize our veterans. And I do know that the college has a very nice ceremony, I believe it's at 3 o'clock in the Jacobus Lounge, which is up towards the top of the hill, and is open to the public. One more, we've had a couple of calls, concerns about door-to-door salespeople. And if somebody comes by and they're looking to sell something, ask them if they've gotten a permit with the city. And there should be a permit issued not just for the company, but for the individual salespeople. And it's not just one big one. We are diligent about making sure that if people are coming door-to-door, that they are able to pass a background check and the company is aware of what the city's expectations are. And if there are any questions, call Ray Parker, call the clerk's office, and we will respond quickly. There have been times where the police have been called and an officer will catch up with the individual going door-to-door. Now, it's not necessarily a 911 situation, but if you have concerns, please pass them forward. Includes the mayor's report, we have one proclamation for today. Whereas Portland is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And we also encourage our citizens to recognize their contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly with effort, commitment, and conviction to your individual ambitions, family, friends, and the whole community. And we like to shine a light and celebrate individuals and organizations within the community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of our city. So we acknowledge the mission of Extra Mile America, to create 550 extra mile cities in America, and we support Extra Mile Day, which was on November 1st of 2019. So I proclaim November 1st as Extra Mile Day, and I encourage people, regardless of the day, to go the extra mile. Do something good for yourself, for your family, for your neighbors, and take time to recognize when somebody goes the extra mile and they do things that are good for all of us. Our next item to discuss, minutes, minutes from October 15th of 2019, your motion to consider, seven minutes, John Bennett, second, Katie Silman. Questions or any concerns about the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of filing as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consider and file. Item number one, resolution to appoint a fire chief, and this would be provisional until the solo service requirements are met. Motion to consider, John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. No discussion.
Well deserved.
Really pleased with the process and with the result.
Let me elaborate. The candidate who is being considered is Wayne Friedman. I apologize for not saying that at the beginning. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. He will continue to serve in a very strong capacity for the city, for the department. Item number two, consideration of resolution to approve the appointment of Elliot Aieka to the planning commission for a three-year term. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Troy Beckwith, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you, Elliot. Number three, resolution to approve an intra-account transfer of $126,140 from the wastewater to budget line G8130-504020 to cover expenses related to emergency repair on the anaerobic digester. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Gary Thomas, discussion. And this is a tank and concrete underneath that's been around since the 1930s and needs a little TLC. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's a lot of TLC.
Carries. None opposed, to clarify. Number four, resolution to accept, recognize, and appropriate the following donation to the youth girl. It's from the SUNY Portland Greek Council. It was from a Pi, a Greek fundraiser. Now, motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Kat McCarthy, discussion.
Thank you very much for keeping us in mind.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number five, consideration of resolution to purchase holiday decor. We're looking at 40 wreaths and two, we call them, snowflake banners, and the purchase price would be $1,000. Motion to consider. Katie Silman, second. Kat McCarthy, discussion.
That's gonna cover everything.
The wreaths and the banners, and point of information, these are the skyscape, the ones that have been the last couple of years, however, they've not been under the city's ownership, and the wreaths would be a new acquisition. They are used, but in usable condition.
And the wreaths at least are a stopgap until we get something better with the funds.
The long-term plan would be to use these, utilize the wreaths for the next two years. And that as we're proceeding with the DRI, we do have the opportunity for purchasing not just holiday, what we're calling, three-season decorations, something for the spring, something for the, for the summer, wait, spring, summer, fall, and then winter, some different things at different points throughout the year.
So four seasons?
Spring, summer...
Oh, I see.
Change of that, three seasons, so we're gonna combine spring and summer because they're kinda hard to tell some days.
So Nick Fields will be able to work with those as far as...
I hope so, yes, knows before. We did have the discussion and, yes. It was a poll and we understand that, how it might interact if they were to light up with the current polls, which apparently some years ago, there might have been some issues.
20 feet in the air, you're not gonna see the blemishes anyway.
We're gonna put you on the ladder and get him up there.
Think I have him ready by this year? Probably not, right?
Oh, no, he'll be ready.
Probably not, right?
Well, between you and Tom, we're gonna hang him up. We'll get, three of us will get out there.
I'm not hanging him for $1,000.
No, volunteer.
I'll volunteer, but not for $1,000. I'll do it for free, but I can't pay $1,000.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or against?
Against.
Against, okay, so we've got six, one. Number six, resolution to amend the contract dated April 4th, 2016, for the design, engineering, permitting of the City of Portland air stripping, refurbishing, and water plant upgrade, adding construction management services in total of $150,000, continuing engineering services 104,536, startup assistance 14,200, and preparation of as-built drawings 14,200. Contract with amendments not to exceed $377,736. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Katie Silman, discussion.
What's been a holdup with this? This is gonna start to be done, it's the same now, three and a half years ago, we wrote it out as.
Well, the work is moving forward. Part of the, multifaceted in terms of acquiring...
I'm trying to remember if there was problems with the DEC, was there?
I wouldn't call them problems, but it is a multi-stage project, we can't shut everything down and do the work. We're building a new building around functioning equipment. There were design changes, there's initial design, and then there were some changes to better accommodate not just the short term, but also the long term. So like any project, sometimes takes a little bit longer, but better to have it right than have it quick.
And these added items are included in our budget?
Included in budget for the project, yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven, resolution to approve an inter-fund transfer of $193,279.28 and $117,268.40 from the Community Development Fund to the Capital Fund as reimbursement for the Gateway Water Project expenses. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Bill Carpenter, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Clarification on the Gateway Project, so some people already have noticed that the sidewalks on the north side of the street have been turned into a lovely shade of pavement and that we do have some spots that are not paved in terms of where the water, laterals and where the water pipes have been laid. But this is a multi-phase project, technically in phase two, although it seems like phase seven today, where the water lines needed to be completed this year. And they've been very successful about getting us to this point. There will be more pavement going down. And the sidewalks are paved because that is a temporary fix until next year. Next year will be a total rebuild of the road. So it's not just ripping up the top layer and taking out the sanitary sewer and the stormwater, we're completely redoing the roadbed, which is very unusual. Most projects, you're taking off the top layer, maybe a little bit deeper, but this is a state route and with the amount of work that we are doing, the state is requiring a complete tear-out. So this will be a big project next year as well. But we've been working well with the state, they've given us feedback as we've moved forward. And yes, the road will be a little bit rough for the next, well, year until we're actually completely done. But when the project is completed, in addition to new lines underground, water, sewer, and stormwater, new pavement, will be a narrower road with bike lanes and more green space between the sidewalk and the road. It will be a more attractive and more functional street within our city. Less of a highway feel, more of a neighborhood feel.
Can I speak on it a little bit, Mayor? Just keep in mind that I have talked to Chris Bastokie on this, that one thing we need to do, though, that the residents down there would like some more information in the time. They're not, you know, they call me all the time, I don't bring it up, doesn't matter, but just keep them informed. They know it's gonna be a three-year project, I told them four, but they just need to be informed roughly in time frame because, you know, the contractors doing the water, everybody's been happy with them, but, you know, they just wanna make things, sure that things are gonna be replaced the way they were, and I told them most definitely, but we just gotta keep them informed what's going on down there. It is gonna be a long process.
It is. And the road is rough, and I think people understand that, that there are places where it goes down, there's such a big divot out of it, that we need something covering that. Like sometimes you see those big iron plates.
That's usually a temporary basis because they haven't finished filling it in, but yeah, it's gonna be a long one, we're just gonna keep settling, so...
Right. So we're gonna need to do something because it'll just keep eroding.
The spot where there's, call it, filled with gravel or the large stone, that's going to be replaced with pavement for the winter.
Okay. Thank you.
So it will be, it'll still be bumpy, but it'll be better.
But it'll be lessened up, yeah.
And again, that storm on Halloween actually...
Got a lot of...
Yeah.
Which it will.
Anytime you remove soil and place it back, you have voids in the soil, so you have to allow that soil to recompact. And if you pave right over the soil that you just placed down, what's gonna happen is that pavement's gonna cave in too. And the whole idea is to keep everything above, above grade if you can.
Yeah. And that makes sense. And so I guess you need the cars going over it to help compact it?
Yes.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, consideration of a resolution to adopt 2020 general fund budget. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Agenda item number nine, resolution to set forth that the 2020 general fund tax levy shall be $9,022,800. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Katie Silman, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number 10, resolution to adopt the 2020 water fund budget. Motion to consider. Gary Thomas, second. John Bennett, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number 11, resolution to adopt 2020 wastewater fund budget. Motion to... Motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second. Gary Thomas, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number twelve, resolution pursuant to paragraph five dash thirty-one of the city code to authorize a 2020 special wastewater assessment amount of seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, levied in accordance with local law six of nineteen eighty-two, to be applied to debt services and cause this resolution to be published in the city's official newspapers. Motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second. John Bennett, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number thirteen, resolution to adopt the following schedule of water rates effective April one of 2020. Minimum charged quarterly would be forty-one dollars and four cents, and that would be a five-point-eight-six percent increase. Water rate for thirteen to four hundred and ninety-nine units will go to three hundred, excuse me, three dollars and forty-two cents per unit, which would be a fifty cent increase. Water rate for five hundred to a thousand units, three-twelve per unit, fifty cent increase. Water rate for one thousand and one or more units to three dollars and thirty-two cents, or a fifty cent increase. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. John Bennett, discussion.
Fifty cents? This says?
Point five percent.
Point five percent. Half of a percent. Let the record show, quick, that I am poor at reading this evening. It is half of one percent.
Very good.
Zero point five zero.
Got it.
All right. Thank you for the clarification, I apologize.
This was broken down to, I believe, what, finally, of threes? When you put something, you'd be all over.
Do you want me to find it? Here it is. To put the water rate increase in perspective, we are raising the rate of one unit of water from three dollars and forty cents to three dollars and forty-two cents. That results in a two dollar and forty cent increase per quarter for the minimum user, which translates into a nine dollar and sixty cent increase a year. Most family-sized homes should see an increase around ten to thirteen dollars a quarter, or forty to fifty dollars a year. So. Not negligible, but necessary.
Thank you for finding that.
That was luck.
You know what's coming up?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Resolution adopt the following schedule of wastewater rates effective April one of 2020. The minimum would be thirty-three dollars and seventy cents, which would be sixty cents per quarter or every three months in terms of the increase. At eleven units or more, three dollars and thirty-seven cents per unit, which would be a one-point-eight-one percent increase. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Gary Thomas, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Discussion on the zoning codebook changes and to set a date for a public hearing. There are a couple of things that have been recommended. And now would be appropriate time, we wanna talk about some of the potential recommendations. And also set a date in terms of when we will have the public hearing.
So adding rooming and boarding houses to multifamily? For minimum lot size and for?
Three hundred dash eight.
Non-presidential uses along with hotels and motels, adding rooming and boarding houses.
So the first is talking about parking, rooming houses and parking, and how many space, how many spaces are required? I believe we're looking at a recommendation, one per bedroom. And then the next one, table three hundred dash twenty-three, rooming houses required yards. And talking about yard space, green space. Number three of five, table three hundred dash twenty, mixed uses in business districts. Saying that mixed-use buildings can have residences on the upper floor only, more of a clarification. Number four, three hundred, chapter three hundred dash one twenty-three and three hundred dash one twenty-five, under article twelve, non-conforming uses and structures. And clarifying that there is the opportunity for alterations or renovations if it does not increase its degree of nonconformity. If it's already not compliant, it can't become more not in compliance. And then number five, chapter seventy-four, to include SPCA and enforcement of existing laws regarding number of dogs and cats in residences. This might be a little different than the previous one. And prohibiting harboring more than three dogs or four cats. And adding cat in addition to dog in terms of animal harbor. These don't have to be decided this evening. This is to set the public hearing here from the general populace, their thoughts. And I believe we've got a couple of public hearings scheduled for the nineteenth already, am I correct?
Yeah.
December third, push it to the December third meeting. And if council desires, we can have further discussion about the proposals and what needs to or should be included for that public hearing December third. Thursday, Tuesday, correct? Yeah, all right. Does that mean a satisfaction? Number sixteen.
Just for clarification, my preparation of local laws. From what you've seen, you wanna see a local law on each one, so you can vote separately? Or you wanna see a collective, sort of omnibus, change in the three hundred section? Or two, the three hundred section changes, and then one for the dogs and cats? What's your preference? The last one? So two local laws? You've already got one on the student housing change. So you'll have three public hearings with three local laws.
Would it make sense to include these with the student housing change? Well, what's your preference?
I'd rather have the three.
They should be seven.
Yeah.
So student houses are considered rooming or boarding houses?
No, not at all. It's not even related to that. What happened is that when you passed the zoning law, you took the student overlay out.
Right.
There were still some residual references to student housing. It now has to come out, because we don't have a zoning area for student housing anymore.
Okay.
So that's just a kind of a fix.
Do we currently have any, sorry, any rooming or boarding houses in the city?
Sure.
Yes.
We have a number of them.
Okay.
And some of the, I believe, some of the college houses fall underneath that too. They're single-family, they're a single-family home. They fall under the rooming.
But yes, we do, so, but I'll do the three local laws. One you already had, a second one on the three hundred changes, and the dogs and cats. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Discussion on recycling in the City of Portland. As everybody at council knows, we had a presentation by the Highway Superintendent, the New York Recycling Coordinator, at the county about the changes that are coming forward. And the proposal is to take glass out of the recycling stream, going from single stream to dual stream. So afterwards, we went back to our current hall of Bert Adams and talked about potential costs. And the other question was about a tow behind, so I can start with the tow behind. Bert Adams is not comfortable with a tow behind, and there were two big reasons. Number one is the speed with what they do for collection. And if you've seen the truck go, any of the trucks going through the city, they're going at a steady clip. And that would require somebody being between a tow behind and the vehicle. So he had some safety concerns about that. And also, the number of dead-end streets that we have, for a truck, a garbage truck with a tow behind to go, get to the end of the dead-end, and then to try to three-point turn and get out of a dead-end street, would cause some other logistical issues. In particular, when maybe we might have a snowbank or two. So the idea of a tow behind, he was not very receptive to. And then the concept of a second haul, or a second truck going through. Did everybody see the email on that?
Yes. Very pricey.
So there would be a significant cost to that, and that would come back out in terms of increasing blueback prices again. So for the city to do that, there would be a cost borne by the taxpayer in terms of blueback prices.
I think we're gonna lose, I think we're gonna lose a lot of, a lot of customers. I think people are gonna go outside of our system because of this. And I'm also really disappointed that the county is pinning all of their PR on this one person. And that I think that meeting was, they were basically telling us that we need to inform our constituents. There's just not enough education going on about it. It's gonna be a real rude awakening to people.
Well, I think part of the issue is that the city really needs to understand what we're doing with our haul and collection before too much education gets out there. Certainly, the county has the education to do of letting people know that the glass can no longer be accepted with your co-mingle recyclables as of January first. And I think that message needs to be get, put out there very clearly. But I think we also have a decision to make. Are we going to tell people to send their glass, to bring their glass to the recycling center? And continue to collect recycling as it is? You know, we didn't talk about another option would be to do every other week. You know, do glass one week, co-mingle the other week. I think if you look at the stream, most people are probably generating way more plastic and paper than they are glass. So that may not be the best solution. And we could increase the cost. Not sure that's a great solution either, so. But I do think that we need to move towards having a solution in order to help hedge gate the public and tell them what we expect to happen as of January first. Because I think the county, with the tip floor, at some point, they're going to say these loads are contaminated and not accept them if there's glass in them, so.
Well, we're also gonna have to let them, this is possible, you know, this is, the next gap does not take effect until July. But they will only, on the plastics, only accept what's on the triangle number one and number two. That's it. Number three and above. So that's gonna take a lot of education, and again, too. There's no reason to hold off on announcing that. We have to let people know that immediately, too.
Yeah.
If we're gonna do an education campaign, all the materials should go out and one press.
That's a good point. Good advice.
No, I have people already paying in the city's retract, that, you know, we don't take the recycling, we're gonna force them to order on there.
And the hours aren't changing. The hours are not conducive to having people drop off their own glass at all. Yeah, so I like the every other week option, personally.
There's definitely gonna have to be a lot of work, no doubt about that. It's gonna cost everybody, it's gonna cost everybody anyway, but it'll cost them a lot more.
But if we went to every other week, picking up glass one week and everything else the next week, that seems like it would be the least disruptive to people's routines.
Just gotta make sure.
I don't buy that one.
No.
Especially the older people. There's no easy answer, that's for sure.
No.
No, it doesn't change, it's just not.
You don't change.
I don't wanna raise their costs.
No, I agree with you there.
Yeah.
No room for. Not an easy fix.
How much longer is our contract with Mr. Adams?
Twenty-one years, yeah. I think we're just, we have two more years after this.
Two more years.
Had to go back to track. If, and his service has been excellent.
Yeah.
It's been very.
I think we're gonna be forced to do something. We don't have the manpower or the money to do it with the DPW either, but we're gonna have to have a place for people to take it to, with the county now.
Well, maybe that's a conversation to follow up with, with the county. Because I didn't hear them say that they would definitely open up later, but I also didn't hear them say that they would not, if they heard, you know, a request for that.
Yeah, the current hours are what, eight to four during the week and nine to noon on Saturdays?
Something like that, yeah.
The only option left would be to have remote collection sites.
Then you gotta monitor, we found some game, a lot of wine, we're gonna be throwing.
Well, I'm just throwing it out.
No, I know.
I mean, they could set up a trailer with a remote collection that just pops up in a parking lot somewhere. I mean, that is, that is an option.
And we gotta educate, if you're gonna have it here, ward this area, my ward's the next area. And that's one more thing that people don't remember, just, I don't see it working.
Not long term. That's something like that.
I think the pot, if it's positive, there is, if you look at the waste stream, glass is a shrinking component of it, just given the weight of it and lightweighting your packaging. So it's not the most high-volume material in our waste stream, generally speaking. But we do still need to come up with a solution for how people can recycle it.
Because I think I have to stop drinking as much wine as I can.
Well, if you come down to my street, there's a lot of glass.
By the box, John.
Bottle bill.
I don't know, it's, it's.
I think the moral of stories, we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
If it's gonna come down to us.
And it's, so we have to decide on a solution and get going with it.
We need to discuss if we, you know, down the road, mailer out. What we might do, we can cost a bit. We have to, we have to inform our residents or constituents.
Has there been any updates from the county? I know that they mentioned that they would keep us posted, and I think they were planning on doing some sort of educational mailer, but I know as a resident, I haven't seen that, so. Does anybody?
No. No updates as of yet that I'm aware of.
I don't see any coming to, that's why they're doing all their stuff.
Do we have a couple of people that may want to spearhead from council? Sit down outside of our regular meetings and start talking about what the different options are and the best path forward. And come back with a recommendation or two for us to consider. I mean, it's early November, we've got a month and a half, but.
Come on, Kate. I'll do what I can do.
What does that mean? Are you volunteering to meet?
No, I'm volunteering me.
No, to meet?
Yes. We gotta have a couple of us get together or something, because.
Sounds good. I will do it.
I can do it as well.
Kat has a lot of experience in this area, so I think she's cute.
No, I know that. The recommendations are the easy part, it's how we're doing, fondina.
Yeah.
We all know what it's coming down to.
We do, and it's, and we're gonna have to do it, because I don't see it happening any other way, like you said. Okay.
I'm interested.
Have to give us your schedule.
On the rest, you luck out, because you cannot have five, that would be quorum.
Darn. Bill was just about to joke.
But if there's any support that you need, let me know. If you want me to attend, let me know when you're planning on meeting. We'll take it from there. Number seventeen, discussion on the youth bureau parking lot plans. So as discussed, the plan would be to extend parking on the south end of the youth bureau parking lot into where is currently a basketball court. So there's been discussion with John McNerney. The hope is that we can move the basketball hoops, so we are continuing to provide the same number of recreational opportunities, but allow for more parking down through the youth bureau lot. This is partially in response to the concerns from one of the local businesses. This is partially in response to the concerns from one of the local businesses and trying to increase shorter-term parking close to Main Street. We foresee there being a little bit of a mix in terms of parking with odd even and potential for some residential. Because we know that there are more apartments coming online on Main Street, and the assumption is that there will be people who will be interested in having a parking spot that they know they can access regularly. But we'll get a drawing in terms of, either a drawing or an explanation from APW, and hopefully we can have that sorted out by next meeting. But it will need to go up for, in terms of enforcement, it will need to go up as a local law. So we look to hopefully have a, could be another public hearing at the next meeting. Because to move forward before the snow really flies, we wanna make sure we're moving sooner as opposed to later.
So John didn't have any issues with taking the basketball court, did he?
No, he's supportive, he understands what the problem is, and we're gonna work to make sure that we're not eliminating recreational opportunities.
And you're right, we take, turn in the parking lot, now it's gotta be changed, so they make sure they.
Further discussion.
I think at some point that lot needs to be paved.
Absolutely. There's some spots that are a little better than others.
Could be awful hard to strike, but the condition is. Actually, the, the south side's better than the north side because, because of the basketball court.
There was this, there is discussion about leaving the basketball hoops, and then when there's not cars, but then the concern becomes, well, if somebody parks close and somebody starts playing, that might be an issue. But yeah, paving will become an item for the agenda as well. Number eighteen, downtown revitalization initiative update. Engineers and architects have done the preliminary work in terms of looking, surveying our two-block stretch of Main Street and figuring out where the utilities actually lie, which is an important first step. We had a meeting last week, and we had some local business owners, property owners that are going to help us out, being an advisory committee and giving us direction in terms of what they think will help us move forward. Not just as we're going through the process, but also final product. And we will be bringing potential changes, potential plans forward for public consumption as well. Similar to what we did with the DRI process, we wanna make sure that everybody has the opportunity to weigh in. In terms of timeline, the potential right now is 2020 to be working on the services. So I think the pipe's underground. And I think it's important to note that the service work in 2020 should not cause any major disruptions in terms of travel and/or parking. So the plan is to be able to do a fair amount of water, sewer, and stormwater without a major impact on travel and/or parking. And then when we get to twenty-one and into twenty-two, there will be a multi-phase project in terms of development of Main Street, and there will be discussion about parking. We believe we've gotten away from, completely away from parallel, so now the question is either nose-in or back-in for parking. How best to share between pedestrians, bicyclists, and cars? And of course, with Main Street being two-way.
People don't have patience for, for back-in. I don't know if any of you have ever experienced trying to back in a spot on a busy street before, but.
Syracuse has it.
Fenton does too.
Auburn, I was, I've been Auburn quite a bit of time, and it was very successful. What they did was, do you know where the Wakemans is in Auburn? Just one block, had to west from there, is how they started it. And they would, you know, they had the big board announcing what evenings would be, from what time to what time. And then they had a police officer right there.
Oh.
And they did that for an entire summer, and then they just kept stretching it all the way down Genesee Street throughout Auburn. Absolutely no problem, very successful. Not that I've done it yet. Because I go to the Wakemans. I go to the Wakemans and nowhere else on Genesee Street, Auburn. I save my shopping for corner.
He can drive her, huh, and I'll go back?
It's called back in town.
I'll tell you what, you back in and I'll be the irate driver, fucking the.
That's all, it's all the same, backing in, parking or pulling in.
Sooner, sooner or later, if you pull in, how do you get out? You back out, so it's all the same. Sooner or later, you either back in and pull out, or you pull in and you back out, it's all the same.
I'd like to ask council for the opportunity to adjourn into executive session for discussion regarding labor negotiations and contract negotiations.
I love how you say that to the end, I mean, you could've told us sooner.
Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned into executive session, do not anticipate any production afterwards. And this should just be updates, so it should not be too long.